Welcome, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
Great. Looking at our agenda moving forward, next week, it's October. October 6th, we will have our regular city council meeting, starting at 7:30. For the record, we have proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our voting session next week will include a second reading ordinance approving FY 2022 Budget Amendment Number Two. Second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Personnel Chapter to add Juneteenth as a recognized legal holiday. First reading ordinance approving traffic calming for the 7900 block of Tacoma Avenue. And first reading ordinance approving traffic calming for Auburn Avenue. Tentatively, our work session next week is the discussion of committee member selection and appointment process. Then on Wednesday, October 13th, our next meeting, we'll have a presentation of the Parking Management Task Force. Our voting session includes the second reading ordinance for traffic calming on Tacoma Avenue. And second reading ordinance for traffic calming on Auburn Avenue. Our work sessions on the 13th will include council compensation and committee appointments. Then on Wednesday, the 20th, our meeting, our voting session will be a resolution providing for appointments for two boards and committees. And a resolution providing for appointments to the Banking and Investment Task Force. Our work sessions that night will be an update on election planning and options and legislative priorities. Tentatively, the council will not be meeting on October 27th. So October 27th, we won't meet. And then in the month of November, we will be meeting on November 3rd, 10th, and 17th. We will not meet on November 24th, as the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And the 17th will actually be our last meeting, our last official, regular meeting before the winter break. And December 1st, we will have a special meeting that will be our joint meeting with the D-20 delegation. That we've been having for the last few years. After considering it, we will be keeping our meetings virtual through the end of the year. So for the rest of October and November, our meetings will remain virtual. All right, I think that is all having to do with our agenda. We will do our proclamation next, which is for Energy Efficiency Day. I will read the proclamation. Whereas energy efficiency is the cheapest, quickest, and cleanest way to meet our energy needs and reduce utility bills for residential business and industrial customers. And whereas energy efficiency can make our homes and workplaces safer, healthier, safer, and more comfortable. And where a smart energy use reduces the amount of energy we need to power our lives, which helps avoid emissions that can harm our debt, our health, and pollute our air. And whereas cutting energy waste saves US consumers billions of dollars on the utility bills annually. And up to $500 per household for appliance efficiency standards alone. And whereas implementing energy efficiency and other clean energy policies and programs help boost economic opportunities and job creation. While continuing to move toward a sustainable future. And whereas energy efficiency is a critical part of meeting Tacoma Park's climate goals. And whereas improved energy standards for home and commercial buildings can significantly reduce utility costs and create new jobs. And Tacoma Park supports increasing the minimum levels of efficiency for all buildings. And whereas for cities and states tackling harmful pollution, energy efficiency can get them about halfway toward their climate goals. And whereas the residents of Tacoma Park can continue to contribute to our energy efficiency efforts by learning about and participating in our energy efficiency programs. And whereas a nationwide network of energy efficiency groups and partners. Has designated the first Wednesday in October as the National Annual Energy Efficiency Day. And whereas together, the residents of Tacoma Park, Maryland can continue to contribute. To our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives. Therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2021, is Energy Efficiency Day in Tacoma Park, Maryland. And urge residents to join us in supporting our clean energy goals and moving toward more energy efficiency now and in the future. All right, so after reading the proclamation, we will now go to our public hearing. First, we will have the public hearing on traffic calming on the 7900 block of Tacoma Avenue. And I know we have two people signed up for that, and I believe we have both of them with us right now. And so we'll start off with Yomini.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Stewart. My name is Yomini Dalal. I'm a resident of 7908 Tacoma Avenue. We've lived here about seven years. We own this house. And Lynn was really kind enough to invite me to join in on this proposal. We have a seven-year-old, and all her friends are in that age group, running around on the street. And for the last few years, we've noticed cars really using Tacoma Avenue as a speedy shortcut to get from one side of Silver Spring to the other side to Piney Branch. They often break the stop signs that are present up on Gist and up here on Boston. And so I really do think Lynn's proposal to have a speed bump on our street would be very beneficial to all the people that walk on the street. It's a tariff fare for kids to get to school, to TPS, where our daughter goes, to go to TP Middle School, which is around the corner from us, to get over to the park, Silver Spring. The Spring Park around the corner, Annabelle Ziegler up the hill from us. There's elderly people that walk there, walk with their dogs. They walk early in the morning, late at night. In the winter, there's no sidewalk on our side of the street. And the other sidewalk ends just halfway up the street. So kids and people and dogs and bicyclists all use the street. And it's really, I think, just waiting. I think there's an accident just waiting to happen. I really hope that the city council approves the measure proposed by Lynn and our neighbors for a speed bump. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. Next, we'll have Lynn use.
Hi, I'm through what we did that we need this. As Yomini said, we've had a lot of traffic, especially.
Sorry, Lynn, I'm having, are the people having a hard hearing, Lynn? Yes.
Lynn, you're breaking up. You can't be heard very well.
All right, turn off my video. Oh?
Yes, I think it's a bit better. We can restart the time. Yeah, go ahead, Lynn. Why don't you restart? That's okay.
I would, um, with the, with ways.
Lynn, I think we've lost you completely. I think the point you were trying to make was it ways and all the different apps used by commercial drivers. Our street has become a tariff fare for people to avoid traffic flights around the neighborhood. So they zip through. I think that's the point that Lynn wanted to make, that there's no way to prevent these apps from using our street, our residential street as a tariff fare. And that is really a significant part of the problem. Lynn, maybe you want to, I don't know, rejoin?
Yeah, she might be trying to rejoin. We can, let me see if she's rejoined. Okay, we can go on.
Mayor Stewart, may I interrupt for a moment? We do have, there were a couple of people who were signed up, who were put in the wrong category.
Oh, okay.
We have Jita Lambright to comment on Tacoma Avenue.
Okay, why don't, well, I see Lynn back. Why don't we try Lynn one more time? And then we'll go to Gina.
I'm very sorry, and I hope I didn't swear on the council meeting. Just really quickly, yes, the traffic has been picking up a lot on our street. And so we, a couple of us on the block did some good due diligence, I think, in that we met with almost everybody in a four to six-block radius and put together the petition that we submitted. For the record, we only had one family who wasn't in support of this initially. And since the process has started, they now support the speed bump as well. So we've really kind of gone out of our way to make sure that we've included everybody in the immediate area with, within the process. And I'm going to let Gina kind of chime in. It's a very busy street. It's now the preferred crossway between Eastern Avenue and Piney Branch, especially during rush hour. And several of us have nearly been hit. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Great, thanks, Lynn. And so we'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you. I am also a resident of 7900 Tacoma. I actually live across the street from Lynn. And we've been here now for almost 12 years. So I have an 11-year-old son who is an avid scooter, biker, basketball player, baseball. So he's always out. And so we have also been concerned at the increase in traffic and the speed with which people drive down Tacoma Avenue, particularly the problem of people missing the stop sign at Boston, as Yomini said. And coming down that hill from Philadelphia really quickly and then just going through the block really fast. The other thing that I wanted to just point out is that there's not a sidewalk on our side of the street. And so there are people, many people who walk on that, on the street. Because the other side, there already be people walking their dogs. And so you, you know, you see a lot of individuals who walk their dogs and then have to walk in the street. And so I do think for safety, the speed bump would make it safer for them, particularly as we, you know, are in the winter months where it's so dark in the morning and in the evening. So I also strongly support the traffic calming.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask the city clerk, is there anyone else who should have been moved up from other matters to the public hearing on traffic calming on Tacoma Avenue?
To my knowledge, that should be everyone.
Great, terrific. Thank you for joining us. And now we'll move on to the public hearing on Auburn Avenue. I believe David North was the first person.
Hi, good evening. So, yep, we would also like some speed bumps in our neighborhood for most of the reasons that I just heard. Namely, we have a lot of families on the street. We have quite a few people who enjoy the street recreationally. You got your strollers, your bikers, your basketball players, et cetera. And especially since the corner up here at East West and Ethan Allen, or sorry, at New Hampshire and Ethan Allen was redone. They took out the right turn lane. And so a lot of people, instead of kind of taking the turn properly, if they see a bus or something at that 711, they'll whip down our street to try and cut the corner. All that to say, I will mention that I've subsequently, since we've put in the petition, I wasn't aware of this before. Been told that one of the houses who would have the speed bump put in front is dead set against it. This was news to us, and I apologize for, I guess, moving forward with this without that information, although I didn't have it at the time. So we might have to sort of renegotiate that particular speed bump. That said, that neighbor does want speed bumps, just not in front of her house. So I'm sure you guys have heard this before. We're going to have to go back to the drawing board just on one. So there's two speed bumps we're talking about. The one in front of 706 is the one that we'll have to renegotiate. But once again, yes, similar to Tacoma, we did, well, what I thought was enough due diligence to contact as many people as possible. The yellow signs indicating we were having a traffic calming meeting and so forth. There was a few more houses of certain individuals didn't want it, mostly because their backs would hurt when they went over a speed bump, is most of what I heard. But for the most part, by far the most part, well over the two-thirds, our street was in favor. So again, I do apologize. So I guess we're going to have to go back and find a different location. I don't know that we can move forward and have this neighbor upset for eternity. But that is, that is what I've pretty much come to say. We want the speed bump. We just have to kind of work on that second one.
Terrific. Thank you, David. I guess we will probably discuss that tonight with our Director of Public Works, and we'll figure out our way forward. Next, we have Renee Jay. Yep, there's Renee. Can we let Renee unmute herself?
Yes.
Great.
Hold on, I don't know how to, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, so basically, I'm the neighbor that David was referring to. And he mentioned the speed bumps when he was going around with the petition. And I actually told him from the beginning, but I understand he maybe forgot that I was against it for several reasons. It's the cars, as you go up the street, the houses are further and further apart. But the house where I am, the cars are parked next to each other like sardines, especially because of the house. 711 also has a lot of cars, and they are also vehemently against the speed hump. And so I guess there just wasn't, they weren't involved in the decision-making either, but I think they wrote an email. I'm, I'm not for or against the speed humps. But you know, as long as it's not in front of my house, or my mother's house, I'm talking on her behalf, then it's okay. There's, there's other issues, like there's, the next door neighbor to us at 708 mentioned that it would be okay to maybe have it in front of there. They have a, like a water sewer to the right of the house. And we were, we were a little bit concerned that in front of our house, sometimes there's a flooding issue where the water goes over the curb and into the walkway and the driveway. And having a speed hump could be a problem with that as well. And I have to do like three, five, seven-point turns to come out. I usually exit the street out of Auburn and Elm. And it's just very difficult to do that as it is, and adding the speed hump, it would just be really overwhelming for us. Also, the neighbors across the street, they have about five kids, and they are riding their scooters and their bikes. And they mentioned it would be very difficult to go over the speed hump. Their toddler would, you know, fall going over the speed hump. So you know, anywhere to the left and right of 706, 711 would be okay. It's just that it would be, you know, very difficult for those kids. I mean, I see them every day there, and we don't mind them at all. And so I don't think speed humps are a bad idea, the families who want them. But it's just that in front of our house, it's just, it would be difficult for us. My mom's also disabled, so she can't like park up the street. And I'm trying to see if there's anything else I can say. I guess just it's nice for the neighbors to get together and talk about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Catherine Tunis.
Hi, Kate. Thank you so much. And nice to see everybody. I haven't seen anyone in a long time. I'm the president of the Southwest Ligo Citizens Association, and as such, we want to advocate for good neighborhood services for everyone. I did attend the meeting that David North hosted a couple of weeks ago for the Auburn Avenue speed humps. And most of the people there seemed to be supportive of the speed bumps. So I did want to say that, but I also would like to bring to your attention that there's another street or another block, just two streets over, that had applied for speed bumps and that also followed all of the steps. Excuse me, my cell phone is going off. Apparently, I'm too busy. That had applied for speed bumps and went through all of the steps that were needed in the process more than a year and a half ago. And I'm not quite sure why those have not been installed yet, maybe pandemic. But it does make sense that if we're going to be installing speed bumps now in Auburn and on Tacoma Avenue, to also include them on the 900 block of Larch, as had been requested. Because that'll give you some efficiency, cost efficiencies. And it also provides some relief for the neighbors on that block who are constantly dealing with cut-through traffic. So I just wanted to raise that as a public issue to encourage efficient use of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Gary Birmingham. Gary with us? Yeah, I see Gary.
To speak? I didn't actually sign up to speak. I'm on, but I do live on 709 Auburn. So, and I do agree with having the traffic calming on our street as well. And I agree with what Dave is saying. And also Renee has a point as well. But I did not sign up to speak, so thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for joining us tonight. All right, just checking with the clerk, are there any other comments for the public hearing on traffic calming on Auburn?
Not that signed up to speak.
Okay, great. So then we will move on to public comments on the ordinance amending the city code regarding boards and committees, and we have missed the rain, Pierceall.
She should be joining in a moment. Ms. Pierceall, you should be able to speak now, if you are able.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. I'm sorry. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the facade advisory board codes that you're, you want to eliminate. And you know, with the perspective of the commercial residential interface, which is what historic Tacoma is concerned about. And I want to bring a few things to your attention. So, for example, most of the fab codes are really covered by the county or the city, but not really all of them. And I want to make sure you understand that, because eliminating certain ones is going to create a gap in protections to the residential community at that interface. And let me just explain that a little bit. So one of the two that I think are very important categories to keep is really pertaining to screening of trash receptacles. And that's code number 8.4.140, and it's called side yards, rear and side yards. But really, there are provisions two, three, and four that actually provide really wonderful provisions for screening dumpsters that are close to residential houses and the public right-of-way. And that is not found in any of our other codes anywhere. And in fact, that can be also said for some of the provisions of the lighting code, which is 8.4.130, which has a lot of good provisions for shielding lights downward and not allowing them to glare into homes. And also floodlights, for example. And those two provisions have been of great importance in resolving problems on Willow Avenue that I am aware of. And it, and also in conversation with Rick Baravickia at a facade advisory board meeting not too long ago, he confirmed that they utilized these codes, and they were very helpful. at a facade advisory board meeting not too long ago, he confirmed that they utilized these codes and they were very helpful. And so I always thought that you would pull these perhaps and merge them over to the, the neighborhood services codes and not totally abandon them. And there may be some maintenance codes also that are important that are gaps that you might want to consider as well. I think Peter has looked at that. The vast majority of them really can go, but I'm worried about gaps, especially where they may affect our neighbors and there are our, that, that commercial or residential interface. So if for some reason you can't do that, I would really urge you to quickly fill the gap because you would be leaving people kind of unprotected. And, and I will say that I don't think the neighbors in these areas really understand any of this is happening at the moment. And so I would much rather.
Pierceall, that's your three minutes.
Okay, I'd rather you keep them. Thank you.
Great. We, those are all the comments we have on voting items. We'll now move on to other matters. It's Ms. Mary Jane Machui with us. I think I saw her. Yes, she is. Okay. Ms. Machui, I think you, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go. Thank you. I just hope that the US government doesn't close down because I need my social security check and as a lot of people do. And I would thank the city for honoring my friend and neighbor Doris Rogers for fifty years working for the city. And I'd also put a bit special thank you to another unappreciated and underpaid person, Mr. Walker of the custodial staff. I understand that the custodial staff are contract workers. I, I hope they're being treated well because Mr. Walker is always, always when I've come, come there for class, always had a big smile and made me feel welcome. And anyways, also I'm just increasingly saddened by the way our city and habitat for humanity have ignored my son, even though we've asked for help in twenty eighteen. And you keep saying, oh, we haven't forgotten, but you have. It's been since twenty eighteen. What is being done? Nothing. And it really hurt, 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 underline hurt me when you send an alarm to everybody to come apart to help other people, but not us. Why weren't we first in line to get the help if you turned, if they turned us down? I never got a turn down letter by them, by the way. But if I did, why didn't you put us on the, at the end of the waiting list? Why were other people put in front of us? As a matter of fact, one of those places on Grant Avenue has an ADU in it. It really, really, really makes us feel like we don't belong. I really don't feel I belong. And plus that, all the neighbors around here have gotten money, the new people and the people next door are selling a house that they renovated for almost seven hundred thousand, which I guess is low for here. And, and it hurts me because I hear, hear these people banging and doing all this work in this house I can't afford that's right next to me. That could have been turned into a house for people with developmental and psychiatric disabilities, but I cannot afford. It hurts me. Every morning I hear them banging. I mean, I'm sorry. And it just really makes me feel that there's inequality. And we're good people. I try to be environmental. I drive a hybrid car. I'm using a battery up at lawnmower. I have, I don't have a gun. We use clean energy. I mean, I don't know. What, what else do we have to do? We need action, please. Not just talk, action. My son will end up living on the street soon, years. I'm seventy-three. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next, we have A.J. Campbell. Ms. Campbell with us?
She was? Um, okay.
I see her. She has her hand raised as an attendee.
Yeah, don't know. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Ah, I just don't get video. Got it. No, is the video, is the video on? Do I not see it? A moment, Ms. Campbell, one second. You'll, you should be able to turn on your video. Apologies. Try it now. Hey, everyone. Okay, um, we can start, I guess. My name's A.J. Campbell. I live in Ward Five on Roanoke Avenue. And tonight I'm here to make an argument for Tacoma Park to have greater interest in condo buildings' financial health. First, let me start with a quick update on my crazy building, my unregistered, unmanaged sans condo board building. Again, on Roanoke. It's still, we still have the unregistered rentals. As far as I know, the city staff had stopped communicating with me about a month ago on it. But my building notwithstanding, condos in Tacoma Park are the way new home buyers are entering the market. We heard the previous speaker talking about the house price. I can confirm that because I've definitely looked at it. The median-ish house price for a three, two, a three bedroom, two bath is about seven seventy thousand. That is no way near affordable for a first time home buyer. Or even somebody who's trading up just once, they would need to have an awful lot of income to qualify for that. And while condo prices in our city are generally speaking relatively affordable, somewhere between two hundred and two fifty, there's a really, really big catch. And that the condo fees can be as high as the mortgage payments. So essentially, when you're buying a condo, you're paying a double mortgage for which you get no equity. You get, I mean, certainly services, but it's so disproportionate to what the costs might be in other jurisdictions and in fact are in Silver Spring. Let's take a concrete example. Say, there's one on sale right now, a one and one, a one bedroom, one bath with a two hundred thousand dollar price tag. But it's about a six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar mortgage and the condo fees are six hundred and sixty-three dollars a month. I mean, that's just absolutely insane. It takes way more income to qualify for a condo than it would be a house in the same way. And it's driving modest income home buyers from the Tacoma Park market in general. What our highest condo, I should check, is about seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month. That's the highest condo fee. And that was for a two bedroom, one bath house. And that was on Lee Avenue. It's currently on sale. You could just check the rental, the, for sale, the like Zillow or whatever, you could see it. The, one of the reasons, oh, I'm running out of time, but one of the reasons condo fees are so high is because there's sort of, you know, this mismanagement and keeping condo fees too lows and board issues. Just consider the whole surfside problems. And I think it's in our interest if we take a greater, greater look at how these buildings are managed and maybe even upping our reporting or creating some reporting requirements that go beyond and more detailed than Montgomery Counties. Yes, I did it. Yay.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. And next we have Judy Rosenthal.
Hi, good evening. My name's Judy Rosenthal. I'm on Elm Avenue in Ward Two. And I'm representing the Climate Action Coffee, which is part of the Tacoma Park Mobilization and Tally, the Tacoma Alliance for Local Living Economy. We are planning to appear regularly at these sessions to share the good, the bad, and actionable in our community regarding climate emergency, as Randy Gibson explained last week when he spoke. Climate Action Coffee focuses on local and regional climate action and education. We meet Wednesday mornings every week on Zoom from eight to nine thirty. And we have participants from the whole of Tacoma Park except for Ward Six. And we are encouraging anyone from Ward Six to join us. And you can find us Wednesday mornings at tp mobilization.org backslash tally. That's T A L L E. So for tonight's good, bad, and actionable first, last week, the good, Anna Misha John, the newly appointed vegetation maintenance supervisor, joined us for a conversation on how we might work together on projects for the city. And we shared several viewpoints on moving forward, including native plant advocacy, appreciation for our parks' maintenance challenges, and agreement on the need to support resident engagement. The bad, regarding Dorothy's Woods, we received word from the city that there is still no definitive answer on how, when, on how or when we might proceed with our proposal of developing a demonstration garden at the bottom of Dorothy's Woods. The proposal is to restore a portion of the habitat there and provide a model to residents of a sustainable and resilient environment. The city attorney went so far as to even say that all activities, even litter removal, require pre-approval and supervision. And the actionable, there are two things. As I mentioned, we would love to have a representative from Ward Six and as our efforts and projects really should reflect the whole city as we, and we welcome anyone wanting to join us. The Pollinator Group, which is part of Climate Action, has worked on educating and encouraging the planting of more native species and up to expand the green corridor, which will lessen the distance pollinators need to travel to seek nourishing resources. And as we encourage more pollinators to our green space, we also need to think about their winter needs as winter is soon to be here. To that end, the fall, the fall approaching and leaves soon to come down, we ask the city to encourage residents to leave the leaves and not rake them. So provide the protection and habitat needed through winter. The Xerxes Society says the vast majority of butterflies and moths overwinter in the landscape. They use leaf litter for winter cover. For example, the great spangled fritillary and the woolly bear caterpillars tuck themselves into a pile of leaves for protection from cold and predators. Red banded hair streaks lay their eggs on fallen oak leaves, which, which become the first food that the caterpillars eat when they emerge in the spring. Bumblebees as well rely on leaf litter for protection, as do all sorts of spiders, snails, worms, beetles, millipedes, mites, and others. And they support all the other wildlife, the chipmunks, the turtles, the birds, the amphibians that rely on them. So leaves are also important for providing organic matter and building up the soil, which gets depleted in our very heavily compacted constructed neighborhoods. So after working.
That's three minutes. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, our final public commenter tonight is Ferd Hafner.
Yeah. Hi, good evening. I'm Ferd Hafner, thirty-eight-year resident of Montgomery Avenue in Ward Three. Also a member of the Social Justice, Racial Mindfulness, and Police Reform Groups at the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. It's great to be with you tonight. I just have four brief points. One, the RFP on feeding assistance that was approved back in, or the money was approved back in July. We're very concerned and perplexed why the RFP is not, as far as we know, out yet. And we very much hope to hear progress on that front later tonight. Second, on a similar note, we hope that we will see a detailed plan for ARPA budget amendments to deal with critical urgent needs of our most vulnerable people in the very near future. Again, hope to hear more about that later tonight. We will watch for that plan and comment at the appropriate time. I just quickly reiterate that we hope that it will include substantial direct cash financial assistance and as well as funding, more targeted funding for food, jobs, and housing support. Third, speaking of housing support, Alexandria's new eviction prevention partnership program, a program that works with housing providers, serving service navigators, legal services, and community organizations to help get residents rental assistance to navigate housing and eviction processes and to provide storage assistance if and when it's needed. Looks like a very interesting model for Tacoma Park to pursue. I realize the city does some of those activities already, but I encourage you to look at Alexandria's full model and their ARPA allocation, budget allocation for it, and then to adapt it for Tacoma Park. Fourth and finally, just another reminder that ARPA can be used to develop mobile crisis intervention teams, helping to deescalate behavioral health emergencies and reduce the need for police intervention. Cities across the country are moving in this direction, as is Montgomery County. Now is the time for Tacoma Park to develop its own approach and program. Back in July, the White House encouraged this use for ARPA funding, as did our very own Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. We very much hope this too will become part of the city's ARPA funding plan. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and have a great meeting.
Thank you so much. And I think those were all the public comments for this evening. We'll turn it now to the city, city council for comments. Anyone on the city council have comments? See Councilman Kostic.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to all the public commenters for your comments tonight. And you know, a couple of those were, were things that we'll get to discussing a little later tonight, but just want to thank you all for coming. I also, just on a logistical front, I heard from someone who said it didn't seem like the closed captions were working tonight. So I don't know if, if the city clerk could maybe look into that and see if that's a, a possibility to, to get those working. Thank you. I see them right now. And then just a couple of quick updates. This last weekend was the play day, which was really fantastic. I think some of my colleagues were there at different times of the day when I was, but when I was there, it was really great to see families out and people enjoying some play and time outdoors. I had the, the pleasure of working at the mud pie stand, which was a lot of fun. Really enjoyed the chance to kind of see kids get messy with the mud and have a really great time. So that was fun. This weekend, I'm sure maybe some of my colleagues are planning on announcing also is the street festival. So that's back after a year away and I hope people will go out and enjoy that opportunity. It's one of the, one of the festivals that we have in the city that, you know, it was a great time for people to get out and enjoy. And then finally, we'll be talking about a little more tonight and next week, but just want to remind residents to apply for our city boards and commissions. There is information online and the deadline is October seventh. It's been extended a week. So I've had really great conversations and talked with some people who've had questions, I know myself and other council members, as well as members of the committee, committees right now would be happy to answer questions and talk through what that experience is like. So please consider doing that and we'd really appreciate your help on that. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. I will turn it over to Councilwoman Searcy.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So first I want to thank all of the folks that came out tonight and your wonderful comments. I appreciate all of the expertise that we have in our city and, and the lived experiences and the fact that you all are sharing those is really helpful for our decision making. A.J. Campbell, thank you so much for bringing up the plight of condo communities again. This has been something that I am also very passionate about. I have one of the largest condo communities in my ward and I can attest that making sure that our condo communities are fiscally sound is important to maintaining entry opportunities for homeownership in the city. And we'll continue to work with members of council and our staff on trying to make sure that we can provide the necessary technical assistance to our condo communities. So, so you're absolutely right about that. And thank you for talking about the fiscal aspects of our condo communities. Had an opportunity this weekend, so I want to thank everyone who attended. There's a couple of thanks. Sweep the creek. I know that there are folks that are out, Becca Lily, and, and helping to clean up the creek part, the creek. So thank you all for coming out. And unfortunately I missed the play day, but I'm happy to hear that it went really well. Also, I just want to thank, the mayor and I were at the NAACP Freedom Fund reception. And that was on Sunday and it was great to not only see members of the county council, but also our, some of our state delegates were there. And to hear about all of the wonderful scholarships that were given out to a number of students and some of which were Montgomery Blair students. So that was a really wonderful event this weekend. And I'm going to do my committee plug as well. I want to encourage folks that are interested in that. Definitely if you have any questions. that are interested in that definitely if you have any questions, to please consider signing up for our boards and committees and there's a lot of room for your contribution. So definitely want to encourage everyone to reach out. And that is all I have on my list. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next we have Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And thanks first to those who spoke during the public comment period. First, to those who spoke about the, on the seventy nine hundred block of Tacoma Avenue, Yomini, Dalaw, Lynn Hughes and Gina Lambright, I appreciate them taking the time to do that. We'll be discussing that later in our work session, but that is something that I support and certainly hearing that it's on some of the apps for, for drivers, leading it to be heavier traffic, I think is an important thing for us to be aware of. Secondly, Orian Pearson's comments about the codes, as my colleagues know, I've had various ideas for how we ought to deal with this. My main concern is that, and this is a council priority, that some of the areas where residential and commercial sections meet that we not lose some of the protections we have. And so I hope that's something, that's something we'll be talking about a bit later when we get to that, that agenda item. And third, I appreciate Ferd's comments, Ferd Hafner's comments, and in particular when the city manager speaks, maybe you can just give us an update on where things stand with the RFP for the food and nutrition, because that's something that's obviously very important to a lot of us. Just a few other things I wanted to mention. My colleague already mentioned Play Day. I did have a chance to be there and I will say that a certain council member from Ward Two and I had an epic croquet battle and I ended up on the losing side of that one. So it was fun. I haven't played croquet in a long time. The street festival was also mentioned and there is going to be a vaccination booth there as well. So I hope people will take advantage of that. Two other things, also of a scheduling nature, tomorrow, September thirtieth, I'm doing office hours from eleven AM to one PM at the Laurel Avenue Streetery in the public part of it, right by the post office. And you can just stop by. You don't need to have an appointment. And then the last thing is, we are going to also have, again, we don't have all the details yet, but Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, which is coming together now for October ninth from three to four PM. And I believe that will again, as it was last time, be down by the Sligo Creek, but more to come on that. So just pencil that in for that weekend. Thank you.
And Councilman Dibala.
Yes. Hi, everybody. It was a busy weekend last weekend and thank you to all the volunteers who made Play Day, the Vaccine Clinic, Sweep the Creek possible. Because we couldn't have done, it couldn't have all happened without all of you. Thanks to the Ward Two folks who commented tonight. Some of you are first time or infrequent commenters and I really appreciate it. News, the Montgomery County Council passed the, in the green building code unanimously this week with an effective date of, now I'm forgetting, six months from now, I think. So that's exciting news. That's another piece of our city climate plan as well is to see them get that done. So that's great. And I'll talk more about my comments on Auburn and the neighborhood meeting and Larch Avenue when we get to that item on the agenda. Last but not least, I am going to read the list of committees for which you can apply if you're interested. Because some of my colleagues have mentioned that we are looking for folks who are interested. So the Board of Elections, that's an important one. Landlord Tenant Commission, that's pretty key. Ethics Commission, Tree Commission. And the Arts and Humanities, Emergency Preparedness, Grants Review, the Green Team, and the Recreation and Community Engagement Committees. Plus, bonus prize, short term task force on sustainable investing to help the city figure out to take that project over the finish line. So with that, I'll say thank you for listening and turn it over to the mayor.
Councilmember Siemens is next.
Oh, to Councilmember Siemens.
Well, thanks to both of you. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mayor Stewart for coming to Adventist Community Services this last weekend to help clean up and, and organize some of the many donations that the organization has received for the Afghan refugees. And also mentioned that Delegate Laurie Charcutian was also there with the mayor. And they spent a long time doing a lot of work and we thank you for both of them. And then I also wanted to mention that, speaking of Adventist Community Services, that holiday season is rapidly approaching. And so they will be providing food, special food packages for the holidays, for Thanksgiving and for the December holidays. Not sure yet what's going to be in those packages, but we're going to see what can be done. And I mentioned this so that anyone who's interested in and needing of any food assistance, of course, can go to Adventist Community Services anytime for that assistance. But with the holidays coming, might be a special time for special needs. And so they can contact Adventist Community Services at three oh one five eight five six five five six. That was three oh one five eight five six five five six. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And Sunday was a busy day. Had to do a quick change between sorting things at Adventist Community Services and going to the NAACP. But I was glad we could fit everything in on Sunday and thank you very much for all that you and Joyce do and that Adventist Community Services does. And for all the residents who came out on Sunday, there was a great deal of work to do and it was terrific. As was the NAACP event and seeing all the scholarships that were provided and also to hear from our county council president, Tom Hucker, he, they received, the county council received an award from the Montgomery County NAACP chapter for their work during COVID. I also did get to go to Play Day and it was a very, it was a terrific afternoon. I got my flu shot from small, the giant pharmacy pharmacist and Small Things Matters and then was able to go to Play Day. So a terrific, a terrific day last Saturday, thanks to everybody who made those happen. I, I do want to do just a shout out to our deputy city manager who continues to really work behind the scenes on all of these logistical things. We really appreciate the nonprofits that step up and appreciate our staff through our deputy city manager, our rec department, who really helped to support. And I should say, public works as well, particularly with Play Day, support these efforts. Next week is the street festival and I will be there. I will have a table and I do have organic lollipops to give out. So I don't have too many of them, but so come swing by and talk to me and I hope to see folks at the street festival. The last thing this evening is thinking about council procedures. We have council procedures that are in our code as well as sort of informal council procedures that we follow, given the last eighteen, nineteen months now with COVID and other changes we've had, a new city manager coming on, everything. We thought this was a good opportunity to convene a subcommittee of the council and city staff to really look at our council procedures and see how they needed to, need to be updated. And so this would be a subcommittee consisting of three council members, the city manager, deputy city manager, probably the city clerk and the city attorney, kind of work through what we have already and proposed changes and maybe some new procedures. So if members of the city council, if anyone is interested, you can send me a note offline and then we'll figure out schedules and get moving on that. I think that's it for me this evening. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Just a few updates that I have this evening. You've already hit on a lot of things that I was going to share on my notes, so I'm not going to hit those items. I was going to say the, the street festival, the city will have two tables with information on services that we provide to the community. So please stop by and say hello to staff that's going to be there working the event. As it relates to the RFPs, we have several, several RFPs going out the door and hitting the street. I will address the, the one that council member Kovar stated, the food insecurity. As stated last week, staff is still diligently working with the food council at the county to get that, get that draft in, get it in the final form to hit the streets soon. It is the hope and goal that that will be done at least by the end of this week, if not next week, for that RFP. The other RFPs that we have going out, as I shared with council through your IFYI on September third and in conversations with each of you, where we just put out today, our organizational workforce needs and risk assessment to review the city's current organizational structure and workforce composition to determine appropriate staffing levels, efficiencies present and where opportunities exist. And also assess our risk of current practices and staffing levels and make recommendations to the city and council that support our priorities, projects and workload of the city. The second RFP that went out today, it is our compensation and pay equity study, a study that needs to happen at least two to three, every two to three years. And so this is going to determine whether the current compensation levels of staff positions are competitive with regional governmental jurisdictions. And then the last RFP, it is, it's not finalized yet, but will be hitting the street very soon is a financial forecast. We, we haven't done a financial forecast in this organization. And we're, we're looking to do a five year and a ten year perspective forecast for council that will also be incorporated when we get into the budget conversations in twenty-two in January. And hopefully that this forecast will also help us in determining whether we consistently move forward with annual budgets or go to perennial budgets, two-year budgets. Conversation that we're having internally. The last thing for this evening, Mayor and council, is staff is continuing to work on discussions and preparation for a recommendation to you all on the ARPA funding. We have received some suggestions from the community, suggestions from staff and department heads. We're continuing in that work. We, we've held workshop this week and we have several workshops over the next couple of months to be able to provide a very good recommendation to you. I just want to be very clear that we're not starting from scratch. And when last week I discussed about our community engagement efforts, we will engage, but we already know a lot of the priorities, because a lot of the priorities are already captured. And a lot of processes has already happened and community involvement engagement has happened. When you look at your council priorities, the HCD Economic Development Plan, the Climate Change Sustainability Plan, other organizational priority plans has already been engaged in the community internally. We're reviewing that as well as the feedback that we've received from you all and members of the community to go into our recommendation. And the last thing, I do, we do have Director Cross, our HCD director, asks Director Cross to jump on and share any updates as relates to ARPA for HCD.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to provide a quick update on how the funds that were provided for the ARPA eviction prevention have been spent so far. So far, since July, we've helped, we assisted twenty-one households. Sixty-eight thousand dollars have been spent so far, which is twenty-seven percent of that total that was allocated in July. The majority of the households helped are in Ward Four, with also households in Ward Two, Five and Six have also been assisted. Just as a quick overview, once again, as I described in the prior meeting, Tacoma Park's goal is to ensure that we help those that are close to eviction. The Housing Division continues to work closely with our partners at Montgomery County, the County Shares Office, property owners and local housing nonprofits to identify those residents who need assistance. And once identified, our housing staff reaches out to those residents or landlords appropriate to gather the information necessary to determine the level of assistance and then disperse funds to prevent eviction.
With that, Mayor, Madam Mayor and members of council, that concludes the management comments for this evening.
I have one question to follow up with Mr. Cross. Thank you for the presentation. So, and the data, so in a case like, in cases like the ones you just described, that where the sixty, the twenty-one households that are helped and so on, did they get their eviction notice or their threat of eviction lifted as a result of that? Like in other words, do they get enough money to be whole then and they're no longer facing that? Is that, is that legally and formally dismissed in some fashion? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
We provide funds to clear the balance of those households that are getting close to eviction.
And but does that mean the thing gets formally dismissed?
So I'll have to follow up with you on that.
Okay, thanks.
I think there's two things, and this may go to the question of delinquencies that we raised last week, because I believe, and Mr. Cross can get back to us next week, that these are cases that before an eviction notice has been, these are folks who are close to eviction, but Mr. Cross can provide us with more details next week or in incoming weeks, when you have the information. We want to make sure it's accurate. And we did discuss either last week or the week before, just to follow up on getting information on delinquencies. And so it's not just people who may be facing evictions, but people who have gotten pretty far behind in their rents. And I know the HCD department is also looking at that as well. And so thank you, Mr. Cross, for joining us in that information. And we look for updates from your department as you have them. Councilman Dibala, did you have a question?
I did. My question is, am I correct in assuming that when the city helps people, the first thing is to see if the funds that would help them out can come from somewhere else, particularly the county that has not spent down their money? And then, so you, you named a number that wasn't super low, large of, of dollars spent, but, but is that because some of the money is coming from somewhere else?
Yes, that is correct. Sorry, city manager, but I'll take this, that is correct. There are a lot of opportunities for funding for residents, for assistance. We ensure that they have applications with the county when we engage with them to ensure they're getting all the funds they can and all the funding sources are being utilized.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cross for joining us and for that update. And we look forward to hearing more in the future. Hey, moving forward then, we have our voting items. The first is the resolution regarding redistricting criteria. And we had a meeting last week and a presentation from the two firms that are working with us on redistricting. The resolution outlines the criteria we would like to see as we're doing, going through that process. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Circe moved. Councilwoman Kostick second. Do I have any questions or amendments? Councilman Dibala?
Yes, last week we talked a lot about the, the block level and whether that was an appropriate goal to to set for, for a criterion in, in terms of, of how to review. I looked at the, and I can, I and I can, I was considering offering an amendment, so I just want everybody to know what happened to that. I looked at the block level, blocks, as well as the census block tracts, the bigger level. And, and it, it is, as I think Councilmember Kovar mentioned, that, that streets might be split. Many of the the blocks are literally just that, and so that would split up streets. Um, so I am not proposing an amendment to add that as a criterion. Just wanted to let everybody know the follow-up on that.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, proposed amendments or anything? All right, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the resolution.
Right, Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, next we have the first reading ordinance approving FY twenty-twenty-two budget amendment number two. I don't believe there's been any changes since the work session last week, so would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Circe, who is to have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, second. Uh, any comments, questions, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, just one question, and I apologize if I missed this last week. The one part I was unclear on was the grant funding in HCD. Because I would have thought we already had that money in the budget, but obviously there's some explanation for that, so if someone can just run through that.
I think deputies, I had the same question last week, and a deputy city manager.
Sorry if I missed it, or?
No, that's okay. It was, it's a big, uh, budget amendment. Um, I think if, if the deputy city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but the answer last week was that it was, it should have been in the pri- prior budget amendment, that it was a carryover from, um, last, our budget from last year.
That's correct, Madam Mayor, thanks.
Oh, so it's a shift, it's not new money in that sense, right? But because we're into the new fiscal year.
Correct. Yeah, and all the grants are in resolutions previously approved by council.
Thanks.
Great. All right, seeing no other hands, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the first reading ordinance, uh, approving FY twenty-two budget amendment two.
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, that takes us now to the first reading ordinance amending our Tacoma Park Code Personnel Chapter, four point oh, four point three two zero on holiday leave to add Juneteenth as a recognized legal holiday. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
So move.
Circe, uh, I have, Councilwoman Circe, um, moved, Councilmember Smith, second. Any questions? Councilmember Kovar, I'm gonna take that as an old hand. All right, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay. Our final voting item tonight is the second reading ordinance on, uh, a court code amendment on boards and committees. And would someone like to move that ordinance? Councilman Dibala moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, second. I don't believe there are any significant changes. There were just some minor changes from last, from the first reading of this. I do believe Councilmember Kovar, you have a suggested amendment, is that correct?
Yes, so, uh, I know we're near the end and trying to wrap up quickly, so I'll try to be quick, and this relates to what we talked about last week, and, and the comments that Pearsall made earlier, and so just, so for people who are watching, we're discontinuing the facade advisory board, and there's a lot of code language that goes along with that, which in this proposal that we'll be voting on shortly, uh, would also be repealed. And, and as noted briefly before, I think most of that makes sense. A lot of it, a lot of the language relates directly to what the, the facade advisory board does. It's, it's meetings and its members, so there's no reason to keep that, and, um, a, a lot of it also is basically similar to, i- i- local work that they would do, which is now going to be handled exclusively by the Historic Preservation Commission. Some of it is, um, enforcement of, um, commercial maintenance and, um, upkeep kinds of questions, and, um, as discussed, also, a lot of that is picked up in the city's own codes or in the county codes, which also apply. There's a few areas where, uh, I think there's a gap where, where this is more specific, and that includes, in particular, in lighting and trash, and, um, potentially in signs. And I know we talked separately about getting into our sign ordinance at some other point, and so conceivably, that could happen then, but I do think since we have a council priority that's focused on this question of the boundaries of the borders where, um, commercial and residential, areas connect, uh, that it is worthwhile to ensure that we provide all the protections that we can that make sense, and, you know, for example, the Bank of America building is being sold, I, I, I think maybe that purchase has, is complete or about to be completed, so there's the potential for further type of commercial activity in a area bordering the, um, residential area in, in Old Town, so I think this is an area that we have to watch carefully. So, I understand, I talked originally about leaving all the language in, and people didn't want to do that. I, I suggested alternatively, we keep some and get rid of some, and I understand it's complicated to do that, particularly on a proposal like this, which is about the committees. So, um, what I think makes sense at this point is to, um, allow the language to be repealed, but I, I would like to add, and this is what I'm going to propose as an amendment, I would like to add one additional whereas clause, and the concept is that, um, I, I believe we're going to be getting, I hope fairly soon this fall, into some, uh, deeper review and discussion of how code enforcement works, and as part of that, the commercial property maintenance and enforcement can be made part of that, and so this is a whereas clause, which, um, isn't technically binding, but, uh, is a way of us committing to doing that, and so I see the mayor has put that up there. And so I'll just read it really briefly and then, and then about it, so it says, whereas, despite the discontinuation of the facade advisory board, the council recognizes that some of the commercial property maintenance and enforcement provisions contained in chapter eight point four oh, and that's the language we're talking about, the, the commercial district facade regulations, which are being repealed, should be reviewed outside the context of the present legislation, what we're voting on tonight, and that the council intends to take into account these provisions or lang- language derived from them in its future work to determine appropriate commercial property maintenance and enforcement policies and ordinances. So basically what this is just saying is, hey, there might be some useful things in there, and we are agreeing that we're gonna take another look at them. It's not committing us to any particular result, but it's, but it is, I believe, signaling that this is something that we consider to be important and worth looking at, and, and I would ask, uh, maybe the mayor can say something about if we plan to get into some code enforcement, discussion or review at some point, ideally this year, maybe.
Yes, I already just, um, had a conversation with the city attorney earlier this week, and, um, given the work Councilmember Kovar that you've done, pulling out the, um, different areas, um, you know, as, as we've said before, uh, figuring out the ARPA funds and the needs, um, uh, regarding COVID are our top priorities, both for our city attorney and our city staff. Setting aside that those are, that that is the top priority, um, and looking at other things we need to do in the city, uh, it is on the city attorney's, um, list of things.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, and I look forward to us doing that, so, um, I, I offer that language as an amendment, which would be the additional whereas clause, and, um, happy to discuss it further if necessary.
Great, do I have a second for that amendment? Councilwoman Kostic, second. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Great. Um, any other amendments, comments on the ordinance itself? Seeing none, oh, Councilwoman Kostic.
I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but I just want to say a big thank you, um, especially to councilmembers, um, Dibala and Circe for all of your work on this, and to the city clerk, um, and the city attorney, and all of the committee members who have contributed, um, to im- helping improve the committees moving forward. Just a huge thank you, um, it's a big accomplishment, and I think we're all very hopeful for the new structures that we're putting in place and the new recruitment policies and, and everything else, so thank you all.
Right, Councilwoman Dibala?
Yes, also briefly, I want to echo all the thanks to all the many folks who contributed, not the least of which is committee and board and commission members. Um, and also to remind everyone that the code changes are just a reflection of some of the other measures we've adopted, um, a code of conduct for committee members, a, um, new training and orientation program for members when they come on board. Better support generally for committees and, and hopefully, uh, with the code changes, um, more council commitment to annual reviews and annual reporting and more feedback to the different committees and, and boards and commissions. So I'm excited, and I'm looking forward to the recruitment process and to appointing a whole new crew and reappointing folks who want to be re-upped.
Councilwoman Circe?
Um, I just want to echo my thanks, uh, to councilmembers Dibala and Kostic for all of your work. I mean, this has been a bit of a marathon, um, in terms of trying to deal with so many different aspects, and, and the city clerk, uh, spending so many hours sitting down as we are trying to think through all of these purposes and, and all of this stuff that's happening, so, um, and of course, the city attorney and, and his team, so, um, just want to thank everyone for all of your hard work and staff that met with us to kind of talk through, um, from their perspective, the value of the committees, um, as well as the committee members themselves, current and prior, um, who took time out to talk to us about your experiences. Thank you all. Um, the hope is that, as was previously stated, um, that this will result in a more, um, beneficial experience for everyone. We'll get information that we need, but also it'll be a, a better experience for all of our volunteers, so, um, again, thank you very much, and, and sign up to join a committee.
Great, I just want to echo my thanks to you all did a huge amount of work. You know, and I think also this was something that has been on our council priority list, and, um, you know, for those of us who like to check things off of lists, like, it's not completely checking it off, but getting this ordinance, um, voted on and done. I feel like it was the same thing when we voted on the tree ordinance. Um, there's a great sense of relief, um, afterwards, and I, uh, you know, I wish we were all together to be able to, to celebrate properly, but, um, hopefully we'll, we'll end the council meeting fairly early tonight if I don't jinx us, um, so people can go and celebrate. Um, and with that, I will ask the city clerk to call the vote on the ordinance.
All right, Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, um, now we will move into our work sessions, and I think we're, are bringing up our head of public works, uh, to talk about the traffic calming on the seventy-nine hundred block of Tacoma, and then we'll move on to Auburn Avenue. Ms. Braythwaite, do you have any overview you want to give us on this one?
Sure, thank you. Um, I did, uh, listen into the comments, uh, this evening, and, and I want to clarify that no, uh, decisions have been made about the location of the speed humps, um, as is the usual process. Uh, we review and, and, uh, communicate about the request in general, and take a look at the, um, at the block or the series of blocks, where their request has been made, a- and then do site visits, um, to determine if it's, uh, appropriate. There are cases where city guidelines and regulations, um, are counter, uh, to the request for a speed hump. Not the case in either of these two, uh, instances. Um, I just, uh, in general, want to speak to the seventy-nine hundred block of Tacoma Avenue. It's kind of a unique block in that it's, uh, the city line is midway through the block. Uh, so, um, there's only a small portion of, uh, that section of the block that's within, uh, Tacoma Park. A little bit, a little bit more than two hundred feet. Uh, we do have, um, guidelines within the city code, uh, related to location of speed bumps. So there's, uh, recommended distances between intersections, and there's recommended, um, locations, things that we try to avoid. For instance, we don't put speed humps in front of driveway aprons. Uh, we take a look at road traffic and parking patterns, and any other kind of obstructions that would lead to, uh, unsafe location should a speed hump be placed there. In the case of the seventy-nine hundred block, again, because it is so short, uh, the portion, uh, from Boston Avenue to the city line, uh, it's, uh, fits fairly neatly into, um, the city guidelines, uh, which in, in that case would, um, uh, suggest that a speed hump should be a hundred and fifty feet or so from the intersection, which is the minimum distance, per the city regulations. Um, so that location, um, pans out pretty well with the, the street, itself, so we would, uh, recommend that a speed hump be, be, what, a single speed hump would be placed within that block um, at the appropriate distance from the, um, intersection of Boston and Tacoma Avenue. Uh, what typically happens in these cases, if the council moves forward with approving, uh, this request, is the city would go out and paint, um, a mark on the street, uh, where the speed hump is recommended, uh, from our perspective, based on site visits and the regulations. And then residents could certainly contact us and comment, either directly to us at Public Works or to the council members if there's concerns or other issues that they have. So that's what I'd recommend in, in both these cases. I don't think there's anything much more to say in the seventy-nine hundred block of Tacoma Avenue. Uh, that, that distance that I mentioned and the appropriate location for the speed hump would be basically between seventy-nine oh four and six, on the even side, seventy-nine oh five and seven, on the odd side within, uh, that block of Tacoma Avenue.
Does anyone have any questions on the Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you for that information, Ms. Braythwaite, and just to reiterate what she said, it's, it's a small block and and it does border essentially Silver Spring or the county, and you can see where that spot is because the pavement changes, and I'm happy to say the pavement's nicer on our side, so, so thank you for that. But I think it's, it's maybe ten to twelve houses at most, no more than that, um, but I think despite the fact that they're way on the edge of our municipality, in particular, that ways, uh, information, a GPS, um, piece of this, the cars are being sent that way as a way to avoid traffic, and I really do think we ought to, um, take steps, and I'm pleased that they really did a good job of talking to all the neighbors and, um, from what I can see, there doesn't seem to be any dissent on the concept, so I would like to see us go forward with it. And I'm agnostic on the location.
Yeah, I would just add that, uh, this petition process worked through the city clerk and myself, uh, on a number of occasions, so their initial application uh, was shy of some signatures, so we communicated with them, and I think they, um, while it isn't required for the city process, they did reach out to the residents on the other side, um, in Silver Spring, uh, not within Tacoma Park, so that people were aware, and, and there was, uh, wide support for it on both sides of the, the boundary. So I, I think that, um, you know, though not required in our case, it certainly was helpful for neighborhood support and understanding and awareness, um, that they reached out to a, a broad range of residents, as, as was mentioned in the comments.
Yeah, and the, and the only other thing I would say is, um, one of the written public comments for tonight mentioned- mentioned the state law that we supported that enables lower speed limits. And I don't know what point we'll be ready to explore that. But obviously, in addition to installing speed bumps or other traffic control measures where they make sense, if we have the ability on some of the sort of smaller streets that aren't heavily trafficked, to potentially go to lower speed limits, I think that would be something well worth exploring, and I hope we can do that at some point. That doesn't affect what we're doing currently for this speed bump for the future. Thank you.
Great. And I don't know, not to put the deputy city manager on the spot, but I know that she did respond to the residents who had inquired about that law. I don't know, Ms. Clark, if you have a moment to address the concerns of some of the residents about how we're looking at traffic safety requests?
So, Madam Mayor, we've convened a working group. We're going over the complete safe streets recommendations one by one. I'm not prepared to comment in depth this evening, but we'll be returning to council in November on that.
Great. Thank you very much for that update. Councilman Kostick?
Thank you. I don't have any concerns about this particular speed bump, but it just kind of made me wonder a little bit, since you mentioned it being right on the border, if there is some process and what that process is for coordinating with Montgomery County on kind of the bigger picture, flow of traffic, speed bumps in other places on the Montgomery County side and those sorts of things. Is there some process for coordinating with the county and some kind of longer-term look at those sorts of things?
The county has a very different process than the city for traffic calming, much more in-depth, requires much more rigorous evaluation, public hearings, public comment, and petition process. So it doesn't blend well with the city's process. It's a, last I looked at it, it was a very rigorous process that requires quite a bit of effort on part of interested residents, as well as county staff to evaluate and review. So I, we've certainly never reached out to the county to, other than on Erskine Street, where we were unsuccessful in working with Prince George's County to collaborate on a traffic calming process initially, though they then did much work on that section of the roadway outside of the city. But we have not done some similar thing in Montgomery County.
Okay, thanks. I'm not sure what those processes might be. I'm just thinking through kind of the Transportation Planning Board, which is probably not the best, you know, since it looks a little at the bigger picture, a little more, kind of bigger streets. But it does seem like, you know, we would all, all the different parts of this region would benefit from being able to coordinate more on those sorts of things and look at them in a coordinated way. So maybe that's something we can just kind of think through and nudge along with others in the future. And I'd also like to see, I know we've talked many times about updating our policy for these requests, and so I'm hoping we can take some further steps on that as well.
Are you seeing any other hands or comments for the traffic calming on Tacoma Avenue? And I don't know, Ms. Braythway, is there anything specific about Auburn Avenue? I think you've addressed the concerns that were raised here.
Yeah, in general, I just wanted to reiterate that we do go through a process of evaluating these requests. There's been no definitive location proposed prior. I was a bit surprised by the comments about people feeling like a location for a speed hump had been identified. Sometimes when we receive requests from neighborhood groups for speed bumps, they're very specific in where they want them located. You know, they basically have gone through that negotiation process with their neighbors, and they come up with very specific recommendations. Given just the general recommendation request for a speed hump that's gone through the petition process, we look at many different aspects, like I mentioned, distances from intersections, distances between the speed humps themselves, length of the block that's included, and things like fire hydrants, driveway aprons, other types of obstructions. In this case, on Auburn Avenue, it's about 660 feet long. So, given that length, it's appropriate for two speed humps to be located on the block versus just a single one in the middle. Again, our regulations would require that they be at least 150 feet from the intersection. We have taken a look at locations where we think the spaces are appropriate, and we can mark those on the street. I understand that there's a strong interest on the part of the residents who live at 20706, not to have the speed hump in front of their house. The biggest limiting factor of speed humps, as I mentioned, is not to have them in front of driveways. And if we can, we tend to put speed humps parallel to the property lines, so they're not directly outside of anybody's front door, per se, but they're between homes. People tend to park in front of their homes, so there's a little less impact of the speed hump for residents in that regard. And those would be the locations that we would be considering for this particular block, between 104 and 106 on one end of the block, and between 712 and 714 on the other end of the block. Again, we can mark the locations that we think best meet regulations and best meet safety standards relative to the location on the street, and so residents can comment on that. We have 660 feet to work with. That said, we do think that they are best spread out fairly evenly versus grouped together or put in the center of the streets, so our recommendation is definitely for two-speed humps within, you know, those constraints that I mentioned.
Terrific. Any questions, Councilwoman Dibala?
Yes, thank you for that, Ms. Braythway. I want to follow up on a couple of things for the rest of the council, and also questions for Ms. Braythway that came out of the conversations with neighbors. So there was a neighborhood meeting. There were nine families attending. They were all supportive of the speed bumps. They talked about some other more intensive speed traffic calming methods and focused on speed humps as being less expensive, easier to do, et cetera. So if you do let me know when you do mark the street, then we can, I can be getting feedback from people about those exact places that you mark. But I think you've had a lot of upfront feedback about the locations. The group did request, the group that met requested bike-friendly speed bumps. And as you explained to me today, could you just say that for everybody else to hear?
Sure. This issue has come up, and I've spoken publicly on this before. The city has no quote-unquote bike-friendly speed hump that we currently install. We use what we call a city standard, or more preferably, the Montgomery County standard speed hump. It does not have a gap within the bump itself that would allow bikes to pass through. That said, we do install them outside the gutter pan and a distance from the gutter pan. So there's usually at least a two-foot space between the curb and the start of the speed humps that bikes could go around on the far side of either side. That said, if a car is parked over the speed hump, a bike cannot access that depressed area before the speed hump itself. The primary reason that we don't have a bike-friendly or speed hump with a gap in it is our streets are very narrow. The most, many places where I've seen those types of installations where they have done gaps are on much wider streets, multi-lane streets. What happens in our case with the narrowness of our roads, 22 to 28 feet wide, if we were to put a gap for a bike, it would encourage cars to drive such that one set of their wheels was going through that gap, which would oftentimes put them into the lane of oncoming traffic, or would otherwise create a safety concern relative to how cars would be encouraged to drive over the speed hump with one set of wheels, either in the curb lane or in the gap that would be created for bikes to pass through, and would create an unreasonable safety hazard relative to overall use of the street. So at this point, we still do not have a speed hump design that we would recommend on any city street that has a gap or cut in it that allows your pass-throughs for bikes.
Thank you. And so the other request of the group that met, which again is not everybody, was that the Montgomery County-style speed bump, the lower, wider, for the same reasons, multimodal as opposed to just cars.
Yeah, let me just speak to that, and I meant to mention it earlier. Our speed humps, both Montgomery and city standard speed humps, are 12 feet wide. That sometimes comes as a surprise to people who think they're narrower, but they are six feet on each side of the hump itself. The county standard, which is far more acceptable from a traffic engineering standpoint, is a more rounded surface, elliptical, per se, so that you have an even process going up and down. It's much less jarring. It is three inches high at its center point and evenly created. The city standard bump, which is a bit of a unique creation based on the city, is sort of a hump on a bump type of profile. It, based on city code, can be three to four inches high at its center, and it has a defined bump on top of an elevated hump that makes for a little more jarring experience when you're driving over it. It has been our recommendation for many years that the city moved to the county standard as the more preferable option based on traffic engineering and basic design standards for traffic calming.
Thank you. So, one more specific question about another street that came up in public comment, and then just, I'll just say, add my voice to wanting to hear from city management about when we would implement, what it would take to implement a traffic study for, to look at citywide 15 mile-an-hour speed limit, and what the work group would say about some of the changes in process. Because I do agree that these things need to be done. In the meantime, we have specific blocks with specific safety concerns. But I want to, I don't want, I also don't want to lose focus on the broader issues, particularly for me, particularly the 15 mile-an-hour study. So, the specific question, and then I'll stop talking, has to do with Larch. And my recollection was that the reason that it had not progressed further in the process was twofold. One was that the city staff recommendation was that the slope was too steep to put speed humps on, and then there was a traffic count to be done, which has been done, I believe, to look at whether there were, whether there was enough count, volume on the street to warrant looking at more intensive traffic calming measures. So I would like to check in on behalf of that resident who asked the question with the Public Works Director and anybody else on city staff who wants to weigh in on this. But that was my understanding, was that, as you said before, technical recommendations sometimes limit where you can put a speed bump, and that was the case here. So am I correct in my understanding?
My recollection is that that initial request is several years old. And back of the time that it was first recommended, both the city clerk and myself reviewed the application. My understanding was the required community meeting was never held, or we were never given documentation that verified that the community meeting was held. So therefore, it was never set up for the public hearing and then never reviewed by the council. Once I received that initial recommendation, I shared with the city clerk that the slope of the street exceeded the 8% that the city has in its regulations for speed humps. Also, that in that particular block, we already had a speed hump and a bump out. So traffic calming measures had already been installed in that street, and the intersection has a stop sign at one end. And so that was just a basic review, but my understanding is that that application never proceeded because it didn't follow all the processes. Given the length of time that has passed since that initial petition was submitted, and Jessie may be able to correct me, I don't remember the particular timeframe, but it is several years. My recommendation would be if the neighborhood is still interested in pursuing traffic calming for their block, that they go through the petition process again. But I would advise them that, you know, we would reach the same impasse with the speed hump request, and that they should take a look at the existing measures that are already there on the street. And it may be that there's just a case where there's not any additional measures that we could recommend, short of turning the road one way or other very strong changes to that block that would make any difference in terms of the impact on traffic speeds. We do have the data from the traffic engineering analysis, or the traffic speed analysis that was done by the police department, and we can share that with residents and certainly with you, Councilmember Dibala, if you don't already have it. My recollection, and it's been a while since I've looked at it, is there was no indication of a significant speeding problem from the data that was gathered. Though we are still now emerging, but still a bit of an odd time with COVID in the previous years of trying to get decent traffic counts that reflected actual use. I think we're probably getting back into a more business-as-usual frame of reference with traffic, so we can evaluate those traffic counts, given, you know, given the timeframe that it was done in.
Thank you.
May I add one thing? I did recently communicate with the resident that, after consulting with Councilmember Dibala and the Public Works Director, that a community meeting should be set up to present the information that staff had about the traffic counts and the ability to install a speed hump on that block. So my understanding was that that, that if there's a neighborhood meeting set up, that information can be communicated and discussed with the residents.
Okay, well, I will follow up then with the resident to see about doing that. Thank you for filling us all in on that separate issue. Back to Auburn, I would recommend to the rest of the council that we do this and that the specific location issues that were raised tonight are real and can be accommodated, clearly can be handled within the length of the street that's out there. That's my view. Thank you for your attention.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Just wanted to follow up on the traffic count collection. Am I understanding correctly that that was for speed hump requests and speed calming requests, that that was discontinued during COVID because of the reduction in traffic? And is that something that is starting up again with new requests?
It's never formally been a part of the traffic calming request process. The Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, or the, you know, the traffic calming group, has made that recommendation and many others to be incorporated into the city's regulations. So it has never been a requirement of the process. However, in the past few years, since the police department has received and been able to implement traffic counts and speed counts in-house, we've asked them to make counts when we receive either requests for people who just are curious what the speed levels are on their street, as well as when we get traffic calming requests, we ask them to take counts. So they do have the ability to do it now. It's not a required part of the process yet. As we review those recommendations, I'm likely to recommend that those changes be incorporated into the city regulations. But we do have the ability in-house for the police department to do traffic.
I think we lost Ms. Braythway.
Can I respond in part to that while we're waiting for Ms.? Can, can I respond in part to that, to that while we're waiting for Ms. Braythwaite to come back?
Sure. I just think we're deviating off our work session tonight on the two.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say that on, that on Larch, the traffic count, as I recall, squeaked in like literally weeks before the pandemic hit. The Auburn, people who live on the street agree that the traffic volume has changed since the intersection one block south on New Hampshire has changed. As I think one of the residents explained, so there didn't seem to be a need in that case, particularly during the pandemic, to document the traffic increase in that particular case. And that made sense.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I just think.
But generally, I agree with you. It's just part of the process.
Where, you know, we have had it in a number of cases and I think it has been interesting and useful. And since we're not, since we're not able to kind of do, at this point in time, we haven't been able to do kind of a big picture, you know, study of traffic flow and volume and, and speed. The more that we can kind of collect these, I think just it shows us a little bit of a snapshot. At least we're getting some data. So I just think it'd be useful to try to, to go back to doing that whenever possible. And I do, my understanding is that the traffic counts are up to about 80% or more of what they were before. So I think we probably could at least get some number, numbers in, in the future. Thank you, Ms. Braythwaite. Sorry. I, I think we heard most of what you said.
Realized my computer was unplugged and it just died, so I'm on my phone. Yes, the police department is still doing traffic counts on request and, and can still, still do that on a limited basis when asked to do so.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Have I seen any other hands regarding traffic calming on Auburn? That was our last work session for this evening. I think we are wrapped up, but don't forget about the street festival this weekend. And stop by for your lollipop. And I think that is all for us tonight and we'll be back next week for our regular council meeting at 7:30. Thank you, everyone.